Good evening, I'd like to call the order of the Joliet Combined Pre-Council and Regular Meeting of the Joliet City Council for Tuesday, September 2, 2014. Honorable Mayor Thomas Giurani presiding will be led in prayer by our friend Pastor Herb Brooks Jr. of the St. John Missionary Baptist Church, which is located at 104 East Zarley Boulevard here in Joliet, after which he'll lead us into Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all stand please?
Thank you, Councilman Doris. Ah, Doris. Councilman Morris. Good evening, everyone. Let me start all over again. Do that again, Terry. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Terry.
Terry, you want to choose somebody else to do this?
Shall we?
Shall we come and pray?
Even though I'm honored tonight, Mayor, to do this, I think I'd be more honored if I was part of Rudy Mahalik's family on tonight. Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we come to this place on tonight, on this night of the city of Joliet. You said in your Word in Isaiah 9, verse number 6, that unto us a child is born and a government shall be upon his shoulders. It is that government that we come tonight lifting up in prayer. We ask you to bless this mayor, this city council, and all the employees of the city of Joliet, and all the residents that make up this great city we call the City of Champions. Now, Lord, we ask you to bless this agenda, that they may do your work as well as their will. Thank you, Lord, for this night, this place. In our Lord's name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Invite me to the time that part.
I like him.
I like him.
I feel like we're alike.
Can you forgive me?
I think you did that on purpose.
I wanted you to remember me.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
We'll start with roll call. Mayor Giurani.
Here.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Here.
Councilman Girl.
Here.
Councilman Hug.
Here.
Councilman McFarland.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Here.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Here.
Councilman Turk.
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written with the following changes? Move Council memo number 407-14 for a resolution approving an honorary street name change for Rudy Mahalik and licenses and permit applications following the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Pauline.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve the agenda. Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye.
So next is Council memo number 407-14, is a resolution approving an honorary street name change for Rudy Mahalik, with the families here this evening.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve Council memo number 407-14. Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye. Mike, you want to read the proclamation?
Okay, this is a resolution approving the honorary street name change on Scott Street between Jefferson and Casts for Rudy Mahalik. And you know, Rudy is a great ambassador for the city of Joliet. For a lot of years, I'd meet Rudy for coffee every morning up at, well, it started out Golden Glaze, I don't know what they call it now, on Plainfield Road. But Rudy was always there and always had positive things to say about the city, was interested with the city was doing, and probably one of the best dancers in the city of Joliet. So, that's right.
I can attest to that.
You can attest to that, Jen? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to read this as, this is a resolution. This is, whereas the city of Joliet enacted an ordinance to recognize outstanding members of the Joliet community by naming a section of a public street in their honor, and whereas residents should know Rudy Mahalik from his involvement in efforts to continually improve the city, and the family of Rudy Mahalik has requested the city honor Rudy by naming Scott Street, and is appropriate to approve the request to the honorary street name to Rudy Mahalik Way. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Joliet, section one, that the portion of Scott Street shall be known as Honorary Rudy Mahalik Way, and section two, the city manager or his designee is hereby authorized and instructed to install brown honorary street signs bearing his name at both ends of this section is appropriate. And section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its passage as stated this day of September 2, 2014, signed by the mayor and city clerk. Congratulations.
Mike made a mistake of giving me the microphone and saying I could talk as long as I wanted, but I won't talk a long time, although, you know, I could fill several books when we're talking about my dad. I'm Rudy Mahalik Jr., for those of you that don't know me. Just a couple of quick comments. What you said in the proclamation is true. He's a man of Joliet. Wherever we traveled in the world, someone would say, "Where are you from?" I would say, "Chicago," because, you know, they don't know exactly the cities in this area, but not dad. It was always, I'm from Joliet, Illinois. He loves this town, has loved it, has worked very hard. And I just wanted to, you know, I was kind of thinking about this and, you know, what, of all the things he's done for the city, what's one of the biggest that he did? And I think, I'd like to remind all of you of, take you back to 1983. In 1983, this city was famous across the whole country, but not for a good thing, it was for a very bad thing. Four women were killed in the ceramic shop murders. Shortly thereafter, two auxiliary policemen were killed when they were on patrol. After that, several other murders occurred, all related to a single serial killer. And if you recall, it was really a bad, dark time in this town. People were afraid. People were fearful to go out. They didn't know what to do. And it was a tough job for the police because it was difficult because leads were few and far between. So, dad being dad, he had been out in Arizona visiting my brother Mark, who lives in Scottsdale, and he learned of a program called Crime Stoppers. And he never waits for anyone to invite him. If he thinks he's got the right idea, he charges ahead. And that's what he did. He, along with Bob Hacker, was on the council at the time, and he also knew of the Crime Stopper program, but the two of them kind of collaborated, and they put together this Crime Stopper deal. And they held a big meeting. They held it over at the Renaissance Center up in the ballroom, and the place was filled, and the media was there. And the spin went from negative, how Joliet was besieged by this crime spree, to positive, that, look, the citizens have come together, and they have taken things in their own hands. And I believe that they raised something in the neighborhood of the princely sum in 1983, 30 years ago, of $25,000 to offer as rewards. Of course, Crime Stoppers has gone on to be a fixture in the community for these 30 years, but it was my dad who was the first chairman and the first guy who thought this up, and he was the spark plug that made that happen, to help change the image and to secure our better way of life in the town. So, thank you again for this honor that you bestowed. We appreciate what the council and mayor have done. We appreciate what the staff has done, and of course, the Land Use Committee for nominating him. So, thank you all.
That's fine.
Who's that?
From who?
Congratulations.
I don't know.
Congratulations, Jim.
That was my dance partner.
Rudy, we got a bouquet of flowers over here for you. Okay?
How you doing? Good. Thank you.
Really good to see you, brother.
He's still standing. Four claps.
You're like one of the Kentucky Derby.
Awesome, man.
Yeah, that's good. That's great.
Next is licenses and permit applications.
We have Council memo number 433-14, an issuance of a Class O license, full outdoor beer garden at 2727 West Jefferson Street, which is McBride's on 52.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. A public hearing was held on August 12, 2014, for the issuance of a Class O full outdoor permit for McBride's on 52, Inc., located at 2727 West Jefferson. The applicants are Brent and Tracy Starry, who also own McBride's Pub on Caton Farm Road. Both Joliet liquor licenses are in good standing. McBride's on 52 was issued an early close outdoor permit on May 5 of this year, and according to the Joliet Police Department, there has been an average number of calls for service. No citizens appeared in opposition at the hearing. There are no outstanding monies owed to the city. The police and building departments recommend approval of the permit, as does the liquor commission.
So moved. Second. Questions?
Just one question. This will allow them to stay open past the 10:00 p.m. closing now?
Correct. With the early close, they had to close down at 10 o'clock. The new one, they'll be able to, they also have the extra hour, so they'll be able to stay open until...
Well, I know they've been pleasing it because I was out there one evening about quarter to 10, and they says, "Last call if you want. Something else, you gotta go inside," so...
They're very good liquor licensees in the city.
It's been motioned and seconded. So, Mike?
I was just drinking some root beer earlier.
Mine is the root.
Not dad's either.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Hug.
Thanks for your commitment to Joliet, with two great businesses now. Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
I have to admit, I was there on Friday as well. You got a great beer garden there, and I think you're going to be very successful, so I vote aye.
Mayor Giurani.
I vote aye. Keep up the good work.
Motion carried. Next is council committee reports. Public Service Committee report.
I wasn't there Friday. Public Service Committee comprised of Councilwoman Gavin, Councilman McFarland, and myself. Met at 4:45 this afternoon to review the contracts, change orders, pay estimates, and final payments. Found to be, all to be in order. This is a note. The bids have come in and they're recommended for the combined sewer overflow plan for this Plains River, the combined sewer wastewater treatment plants. They came in a little bit higher than was anticipated when a couple of weeks ago, we authorized the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency loan for the loan program of around 43 million. It came in around 40, or 41 million. It came in around 4.5, so we're going to have to revise the loan for about another $4 million. And that was also on the agenda and also approved.
Pauline.
I show no other reports. Next is a presentation. We have Mr. Kevin McCanna with Spear Financial here.
Good evening. It's just an update on the bond refundings that you cast in ordinance for last month. At that time, we thought we were going to be doing the police radio issue this week and the water and sewer in a couple of weeks. The police radio issue has gotten a little bit more complicated than expected, so the water and sewer issue will be going next week, and then the police radio issue will be going in several weeks. So I passed out just a timetable you can look at. There's also some numbers attached. The, it shows that interest rates are doing better than we expect. If you recall the staff memo when you passed the bond ordinance, it was about $250,000 savings expected for water and sewer. It's now, as it shows on the last page of this memo, it's looking to be savings of around 400, let's see, second to last page, it's looking at savings of about $400,000. So rates are holding, so we expect next week should be very, very successful. In addition, the, when we get to the radio issue in several weeks, we would hope that the savings are significantly above the $80,000 that was in that memo at that time. And with that, I mean, you know, both your bond ratings have been confirmed. The general navigation rating was confirmed at the AA. The bond rating for the water and sewer issue was confirmed. The revenue bonds confirmed at the AA minus. I think both ratings were very solid during the rating agencies. And presumably, the market will hold. Unfortunately, the market's holding because of all the bad international news. It's outweighing the good domestic news. So with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Sure.
So the rating that came back, is there any change from what we were previously...
No, it confirmed your existing ratings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the consent agenda. First is the approval of minutes. It is recommended the minutes of the pre-council meeting held on August 18, and of the minutes of the regular meeting held on August 19, 2014, stand approved as recorded. Council memo 399-14, position vacancies. It is recommended the city manager be authorized to fill the corporation council position in the legal department and the accounting manager position in the finance department. Is there a motion to approve said consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Pauline.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 402-14, ordinance approving a special use permit to allow truck and equipment services and leasing operation within an existing industrial building located at 1602 Workers' Court. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Do you have a little background on this, please?
Certainly. This is Jack DeHaney Companies. They are, have acquired a two-acre industrial property at 1602 Workers' Court. They, the special use permit will allow truck repair, truck sales, and truck leasing as part of their existing truck and equipment assembly business. They do specialize in sewer cleaning equipment, street sweepers, and vacuum trucks.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 402-14, ordinance approving a special use permit to allow truck and equipment services and leasing operation within an existing industrial building located at 1602 Workers' Court. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Do you have a little background on this, please?
Certainly. This is Jack DeHaney Companies. They are, have acquired a two-acre industrial property at 1602 Workers' Court. They, the special use permit will allow truck repair, truck sales, and truck leasing as part of their existing truck and equipment assembly business. They do specialize in sewer cleaning equipment, street sweepers, and vacuum trucks.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
I just want to make sure that all the service work's going to be indoors. Is that correct? From the memo I read?
I don't know specifically.
The service work will be indoors. Yeah.
They do have a large storage area off the side, but all the work will be done inside.
Thank you.
And it has been screened and fenced in accordance with our ordinance.
I vote aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 403-14, ordinance declaring certain properties as public nuisances. It is recommended said ordinances be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I have one question. The property, I believe I brought this up to staff, at 1522 Clement, which is a former Clark gas station. Once we condemn this as a public nuisance, what's the next step on that? Can somebody give us background on that? Because I know the neighbors around there have been complaining about fumes coming from the exposed caps from where the gasoline storage containers are. People have been stripping metal from there. Is this something where the city then is going to take over this and take ownership, or can somebody give us a little background on this, please?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, when the council considers and adopts an ordinance declaring property as a public nuisance, that's your final authorization to the legal department and the Neighborhood Services Division to bring the property to court. Normally, we're not dealing with commercial properties, much less gas stations, so our normal process is a final notice to the owner, and then away we go. This may require special handling because of what you have on the property, but this will now become a legal issue. You're authorizing us to take the owner to court to seek whatever relief is recommended by Mr. Mackley and Neighborhood Services as well.
Is there a way that the city, and you tell me, I know we've done some of this, but I think we own the property, especially the church that I believe is on Franklin and Jackson, to quarantine this off? I know we eventually demolished the church, but for instance, we brought this, I believe, the city manager was there with myself, and I forgot who else was there. But people are basically looting this facility, and it's a public hazard. The neighbors have complained about it, and I'm just seeing if we could do some immediate work. I think we talked about fencing, you know, some...
Well, we do have the ability to do some things to deal with imminent public safety issues. For example, the old church structure on Jackson Street you referred to, there, Dave Mackley and Building Safety decided that structure could fall over, and so that there was an actual quarantine put around the site. I'm not personally familiar with this, and so I'm not sure what would be justified. I know if there's an absence of security to the structure itself, after a notice, we can have the property boarded, so that would take care of the building. I'm not sure what else is on the site that is at risk or causes a hazard to the neighbor, but...
Siphoning what was left in the tanks.
Yeah.
I mean, they stripped, I got pictures, they stripped all the metal from the actual pumps. They're taking light fixtures out of it. Like I said, the neighbor called, said people were actually siphoning what was left in the bottom of the tank. So I'm just saying, it's a safety, and, you know, I actually feel sorry for the visitors that go to Marishka's and the neighbors, because, I mean, it's an eyesore. Just to look into.
Well, we'll work with Mr. Mackley. He'd probably be the chief staff person to help us with advice on that. I'm not sure, as the lawyer sitting here, if that requires us to, or would lead us to somehow secure fittings that are on the ground. If those can be locked, they're covered, I don't know. But we'll get with Mr. Mackley tomorrow.
Thank you.
This could be a long-drawn-out affair, especially if them tanks leaked, and now you have to remediate all that ground. Who owns it now, do we know?
I don't know. The Neighborhood Services would have a title report for that. It's, you know, probably a Clark franchisee. I can't imagine it's a multinational corporation that would abandon a gas station, walk away, would fuel in the ground, an unsecured facility. Doesn't sound too corporate.
It sounds like it's a... Ink on here.
Taya Properties, yeah. I was just going to tell you. Taya Properties, Inc.
That could be a foreclosure agent. It's hard to say, but we'll get into all that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 404-14, ordinance authorizing the city to borrow funds for the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Water Pollution Control Loan Program. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
If I can explain a little bit, what this does is, when we went to bids, we found that the bid for the combined sewer overflow project came in, came in higher than expected, so we're approximately $4 million higher on this. So you're doing two things here. You're repealing the motion that was adopted at the last meeting and adopting the same resolution with just different numbers. And this, this of course, is so that we can move this project forward, borrow our money through I EPA, and get a quarter percent interest lower than the 2 percent, which should save us about $1 million during the duration of the bond issue.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor. You answered my first question, Jim, about how it affected the deadline we had. So, just quickly, how did we come up, you know, I mean, is there any rationale behind how our estimate was that much off, 10 percent off?
Yeah, I don't know why our engineering estimate was off that much, except that this is a huge project. It's kind of hard to get an estimate on something that's not frequently done around the country, tunneling under a river and the pollution control program. The other thing is, it's sometimes just a matter of timing. How busy are the contractors right now? How many other jobs do they have lined up? And, and so you'll see a variation in the bids at any given time.
And I would assume that's a relatively small pool of companies that can handle a project of this nature.
That's true. Yeah, they're, they're big companies that, that bid on this project this size.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
One more, Senator. The, so once we approved this, I think we discussed this in committee, the, I was, an inquiry came to me, and Councilwoman Quillman, I was out of town, but we met with some minority contractors in our committee, and one of the questions that was brought to me is, now that this is a city project, like, the transportation center is not a city's, not a city project, are we going to maintain the city's 10 percent minority agreement that's out there?
Yes.
And how do we please that?
Well, that is a requirement set forth in the bidding documents, and it'll be in the contract that we sign when you award the bid later in the agenda.
Thank you.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under resolutions, Council memo number 406-14, a resolution declaring certain city of Joliet
the country, tunneling under a river and the pollution control program. The other thing is, it's sometimes just a matter of timing. How busy are the contractors right now? How many other jobs do they have lined up? And, and so you'll see a variation in, in the bids at any given time.
And I would assume that's a relatively small pool of companies that can handle a project of this nature and size.
That's true. Yeah, they're, they're big companies that, that bid on this project this size.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
One more, sir, Mayor. The, so, once we approved this, I think we discussed this in, in committee, the, I was, an inquiry came to me and Councilwoman Quillman, I was out of town, but we met with some minority contractors in our committee, and one of the questions that was brought to me is now that this is a city project, like, the transportation center is not a city's, not a city project, are we going to maintain the city's 10% minority agreement that's out there?
Yes.
And how do we please that?
Well, that is a requirement set forth in the bidding documents, and it'll be in the contract that we sign when you award the bid later in the agenda.
Thank you.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under resolutions, council memo number 406-14, a resolution declaring certain city of Joliet property as surplus. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Somebody second it?
Second.
Any questions?
I, I have one, how do, do people bid on how much they're going to give us for this, or how does that work?
No, Mayor, these, we have kind of a graveyard over there right now, and, and we've been using these vehicles for parts on, on, to keep our older vehicles that are, you know, the same year and the same parts. And in essence, those that haven't, we can't take the parts off anymore, then they get pushed over to the side, and the fire department comes in and practices their Jaws of Life Training Program, and tears, tears the car into pieces. So it's really not going to be, these are vehicles that are really kind of mashed up-
The scrap end of it, the scrap, how do we decide who goes, who gets them?
There is a, I'm, I don't know. We will get a- Okay.
We get a what, I'm sorry?
We'll get some local prices on, on the, on the scrap, but it's going to be a per pound kind of thing.
Right.
Just on the metal.
I know they were useless, I was just wondering how we determine who gets them.
Pauline.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye, and thank you for cleaning up the Cedarwood area.
Yeah.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 407-14, resolution approving in honorary, oh, we did that one, I'm sorry. That one's already been approved for tonight. Council memo number 408-14, it's a resolution appropriating funds for the Oneida Street slash Prairie Avenue Roadway Improvements Project for 2014. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 409-14, a resolution appropriating funds for the Eastern Avenue Stone Street Roadway Project. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Pauline.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 410-14, resolution requesting authorization to implement a tobacco enforcement program. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved. Second.
This is something we do every year, right?
Every year. It's a grant program that we get through the state, Illinois Liquor Control Commission.
Thank you. Any questions? Pauline, I'm sorry.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 411-14, resolution requesting authorization to accept and implement a F F Y 2015 Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program Step Grant. It is recommended said resolution be adopted. So moved.
Brief explanation, please, Jim.
Yes, Mayor, this is a National Highway Traffic Safety Administration program. They handle the funds through the state, and each year we get a grant for various types of enforcement. This year, it's, the focus is on occupant protection and impaired driving, and the difference this year is that we got $28,500 for actual equipment. Typically, we just receive it for the overtime, but we'll be able to purchase about 1,000 traffic cones, 100 type-two barricades, and a trailer as part of the grant.
Thank you. Any questions?
A quick one. It's kind of related, but talking about the step grant and all, Chief, we had a, we had a safety check roadblock on Keaton Farm about a week ago, how did that go?
I don't have exact numbers, but I know they've been doing a pretty intensive effort, especially with the Labor Day Initiative, to try to increase the use of safety restraint systems, like city manager said, child seats, what have you, and we've also been doing DUI checkpoints throughout the city.
I, I went through and passed.
Congratulations. Some weren't so successful.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
I vote aye. Chief, really quick, did your department write for these two grants, the tobacco and the step program?
Yes, we did. These are generated out of our traffic division.
Kudos to you and your staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 387-14, resolution approving an economic development agreement with Mickey Oil Company. This resolution is provided for council's consideration. What did she say?
Repeat that, this was a-
Yep, that's what Krista had for me. She said that this resolution is provided for council's consideration, so-
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what's before you is actually the memorandum, last time it was presented to the council. We currently have a staff request to table this matter to the next meeting to let Mr. Hanson and myself finalize the agreement. It's my expectation at this point that we'd probably take it back to the Finance Committee for one last look. So I'd ask for a motion to table.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to table this item to the next council meeting. Councilman Oderkirk.
Jeff, could you be, I guess I'm a little unclear, what is the issue, the outstanding issues?
There are a couple of issues left. One would be the effective term of the agreement, the sec, and, and there the issue is, the last draft that was presented to the Finance Committee was a three-year term, and now the property owners are, well, they've always sought a longer term, and we're trying to accommodate that request through item number two, which is working on some verification process where, where the city can be sure, since this is all based on the business owner's projections about future business activity, based on changes in sales tax, changes in corporate branding, with all those uncertainties, the city wants to make sure that these incentives generate a, a positive business tax flow to the city. And so, my last draft attempted to set up a, an annual process where the performance of the business would be measured against a benchmark, whether it be 2013 or 2014 business tax production from the site, and under the current draft, which again is still being negotiated, if the business exceeds the current benchmark, then the agreement, the incentives would still be available. If the business does not perform as expected by the business owner's current projections, and the business taxes generated by the site don't make the benchmark number that we need to agree upon, then the agreement would be subject to termination.
Well-
Mayor, I have a question. When there's a table, a motion for a table-
Yeah.
And, and a vote has been taken, you're not supposed to discuss it anymore until the next time.
The vote has not been taken, but your point is well taken, Pauline.
Yeah, I had the floor.
But there's a motion to table, and it's been seconded, it's not debatable.
I'm not debating, I asked a question before I voted.
Well, that's debating it.
No, it's not a debate, it's a question.
After we table this, if you want to ask the question, you can ask the question.
Well, I'm not going to vote unless I have an answer, but having said that, thank you for working with Mickey. I, I appreciate staff's efforts, I'd like to see this get done, and I'm going to vote aye.
We have a good relationship with the business owner, and we should be able to bring it home by the next meeting.
Thank you.
Pauline.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
I vote aye, I have a comment. At the Finance Committee meeting, the business owner maintains that by doing this, he'll, he will be paying more taxes to the city of Joliet. I simply ask some kind of an insurance, that if that doesn't happen, that this agreement comes to a stop. I don't want to take the chance with an open-end agreement that the city may lose some money. So I ask that there be some kind of an insurance, that if they don't reach the benchmark, that this agreement would cease.
Next is council memo number 413-14, resolution authorizing an amendment to an agreement with Victory Associates LP for the Victory Center of Joliet. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
Jim? Yes, I'd like to offer a little clarification in the background here. Back in 97, the federal government provided these home funds to the city, and the city entered into the agreement with Victory Associates to renovate the former Cath, Joliet Catholic High School into 56 affordable senior housing units. This, this loan and mortgage was, was a way that Victory Associates could structure their, their debt and, and get tax, maximize their tax credits to, to make it affordable for our seniors. So, in forgiving this loan, it, it's really the federal government, it was never our money that, that we gave them. The city isn't losing any money here, but what we are gaining here is that this will remain as affordable housing until 2028.
Any questions?
Yes. Jim, what's the occupancy there, is it 100%?
I believe it's pretty close to that, yes.
And is it open to-
And they say their margins are really thin.
And it's open to Joliet residents as a first priority?
I believe, believe so, I know there's a number of Joliet residents.
Step up to the microphone, sir, name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Jerry Finnis Pathway Senior Living and one of the general partners of Victory Associates from Displanes, Illinois. We have, you asked the question, the occupancy has basically been substantially filled for almost forever, since we, the project was finished in October 98. The, in, in general, it, you know, we're not really allowed to give total preference by community, but this is a Joliet project, and virtually almost everybody comes from the city of Joliet.
And so what we're going to do here, basically, is if, if you had to pay off the 1.4 million, we'd have to reflect that in, in the seniors' rents, and this is going to stabilize and keep them where they're at, keep them low.
Yeah, we're required to keep rents affordable-
For 14 more years.
Till 2028.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, how many units are in that building?
57. Start at 56, it's 57.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I need a motion as second.
A motion?
So moved. Second. Pauline?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Just a quick comment, you know, I, I wasn't even involved in politics by any means at the time, but I do remember, I was a younger man back then, that there was a lot of hand wringing over what they were going to do with that building, so you guys really stepped up and put together a, a really nice project, and 14 more years of affordable housing for the seniors is great, so aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
I vote aye, now we've got to see if we can get that Victory Light working.
Motion carried. Council memo number 414-14, resolution authorizing certain employees of the city of Joliet to sign checks, vouchers, and warrants on behalf of the city of Joliet, designating financial institutions to be used as depositories for city funds. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
Jim? Housekeeping, right?
Housekeeping.
Okay.
Actually, we're kind of taking the mayor's appointment at the end of the agenda for granted, that our, our finance director will be appointed city treasurer, and right now, the Director of Administrative Services is the city treasurer.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland. Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Bids and contracts awarded contracts. Council memo number 416-14, approve the repair to the Well 29D pump. Council memo number 417-14, approve the repair to the Well 29D motor. Council memo number 418-14, award a contract for Well 28D rehabilitation project. Council memo number 419-14, award a contract for the East Side wastewater plant non-podable water system upgrades construction project. Council memo number 420-14, award a contract for the U.S. Route 6 sanitary sewer improvements construction project. Council memo number 421-14, award a contract for the combined sewer overflow long-term control plan, Displanes River Combined Sewer Overflow Tunnel Construction Project. Council memo number 422-14, award a contract for the East Side wastewater treatment plant effluent pump station and screen replacement construction project. Council memo number 428-14, approve a professional services agreement for 2014 water main construction inspection services. Council memo number 424-14, award a contract for the Oneida Street Prairie Avenue Roadway Improvement Project 2014. Council memo number 425-14, award a contract for the Eastern Avenue Stone Street Roadway Improvement Project. Council memo number 426-14, purchase In Squad computers using 2014 911 surcharge reallocation grant funds. Council memo number 427-14, award a contract for Microsoft licensing and services. It is recommended council memo numbers 416-14 through 427-14 be approved.
Could you repeat that?
I was afraid you were going to ask that. I'm still coming up for air.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Pauline.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Gavin. Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Jerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Amendment change orders and payments. Council memo number four twenty-nine dash fourteen, approve change order number one and payment estimate, sorry, payment estimate number one for the 2014 sidewalk curb replacement project. Council memo number four thirty dash fourteen, approve change order number two and payment estimate number five and final for the Cottage Place Jasper Street roadway project. Council memo number four thirty-one dash fourteen, approve payment for the asset management work order system annual maintenance public utilities 2014. It is recommended council memos numbers twenty-four, four twenty-nine dash fourteen through four thirty-one dash fourteen be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Quick one. I know it's the sole distributor for the Fieldport software. Do we have an idea of, does that fall in line, the 47,000? Maybe our IT guy can give me, you know, I mean, it's 47,000 for yearly maintenance. Does that, does that seem reasonable, since we don't have competing, we don't have the ability to have competing numbers?
Yeah, usually it's based on a percentage of total cost for the software. This is something that's been handled out of the Utilities Division for the last, I don't know, several years.
Okay.
And so, yeah, I think it's quite in order.
Okay.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Mayor Jerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. We already did the licenses and permit application, and next is Mayor, Mayor Jerani appointments.
With the recent hire of James Godatti as the Finance Director, I am proposing to appoint him as treasurer for the city of Joliet effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Hug.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Godatti.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Welcome aboard, Jim. Aye.
Mayor Jerani.
I vote aye.
Motion carried. City manager.
I just wanted to remind everybody that during the month of September, the city is accepting applications to test for police officer entry-level position. You can go to, it's strictly online at jolietpolice.org. And this time, council recently approved that you get a half a point extra for each six months residency within the city of Joliet, up to a maximum of five additional points on your score. That's all I have.
Next is new business, not for final action or recommendation.
Your Honor?
Yes.
With our upcoming look and strategies toward the economic development for the fourth and fifth district, Your Honor, I'd like to ask city staff to assist me. I have been going around meeting different business owners in the area, and I would love to organize a meeting of our business owners in the fourth district and fifth district, if Councilman Morris would join me in this, and would like to have staff assist me in the contact information and the invitations out. We have a, I will get with you on that date, Economic Development Committee. Join me, please. But we do want to hear from our businesses, and see where we can go from there, maybe lead to some new opportunities for business development.
John?
Yes, sir.
Derek? Jim?
I've got two things. First thing is, you mentioned about the testing for the police department. Do you see in the 2014 budget any new hires?
Haven't thought about positions in the various departments at this point. Our new finance director, however, is working on budget preparation his first week here. And, but we do need to have an active eligibility list, because there are unexpected retirements and people moving, and we need to be ready to fill those vacancies as they occur.
This, I like to see personally, in our budgeting for 2015, if it's not in this year's budget with the surplus that we so-called have, to reestablish a downtown BEACOP that's specifically in the downtown area. And this kind of brings me into my second request, is we have race fan rally. We have a big race coming up here in September 13th, 14th. I'd like to see if we can get staff, take from different resources, because I know we didn't replace John Misek's position, and really spruce up the downtown area. I'm at the opportunity this evening to walk the downtown perimeter after our Public Service Committee meeting, and I'm very bothered by the cleanliness, the downed trees, and the fact that we have trees that we've cut down. I know we bought a stump grinder to clean those up, clean in the grates of the trees. We're welcoming tens of thousands of individuals to our community, and I think the least we can do is clean it up for these festivals a couple times a year. So I'm asking that it requests, go out to either pay some overtime, but to put some special attention and detail to the downtown area. The last thing I have is, and then maybe after the end of the hydrant testing, I saw that the release went out, that maybe we can get an update in the status of how many are out and where we are in terms of repairing them. And that concludes my report.
Okay. I haven't done yet. Bye.
Nothing.
Good job, Pauline. You, Krista usually has help. You did it alone, so good job. Thank you.
Bye.
Your Honor, I just wanted to mention that on August 9th, Dave Hacker passed away suddenly and unexpectedly at the age of 55 years old. He was a son of Councilman Bob Hacker and his mother, Cotty Hacker. He was a great son, husband, father, brother, uncle, and a friend to many people. He served more than 15 years on the Rialto Board. I call it the Rialto Board, but it's called the...
Will County Metropolitan Auditorium Authority.
Right, okay. And he worked hard to bring first-class entertainment to the theater that for thousands to enjoy. He enjoyed politics and enjoyed working on campaigns and helped on many campaigns. His passing is not only a huge loss to his family, but also a huge loss to the city of Joliet and Will County. I would appreciate if we could honor Dave with a moment of silence at this time. Thank you.
Just so everyone knows, I am in the process of writing a resolution to present to the Rialto Board to read at one of their meetings. Also, Jim, you made some good points. Last week, Jim and I sat down and we talked about that exact thing. And the bricks behind the fountain, now some of them are sticking up, and I know you're in the process of getting a bid to have them replaced, along with some other ones on Chicago Street. And we talked about cleaning the sidewalks and getting the street sweepers down here. So, we will be doing that. Mayor, council comments?
Oh, that was my comment.
Jan?
Derek?
Yeah.
Warren?
I don't, I can't fill those shoes. I'd just like to invite everyone out Sunday, the Mount Zion Baptist Church, and they didn't ask me to do this, but they, I believe they invited the mayor and the full council and the city of Joliet as well. They're having worship in the, at the cross. I was going to say at the park. Worship at the cross at Silver Cross Field on Sunday, I believe, at 3:30 or 4:00. Get there at 3:30, you should be on time, even if it started at 4:00. I think it'd be a wonderful worship experience with the Mount Zion Baptist Church. And on September the 13th, I should know this, because this is myself and some friends, we having a gospel concert. I know that's the race weekend, but, you know, can't make it out to the race. Stop by by Centennial Park for some more good gospel music, September 13th, from 2:00 to about 9:00.
That's it, thank you.
Thanks.
This is, I should have said this last time, but I just got texts that I forgot. There's an article in the Herald News talking about the downtown meters. And one of the options we haven't looked at, and something that I would like to see come back as we analyze after the structural engineers, is what would it take for the city to eliminate the on-street meters? To go to communities like Morris, Naperville, Lockport, and do two-hour free parking? Again, having our meter maids going and enforcing two-hour time limit, marking the tires and whatnot. But see financially if it's something that we are able to maybe make up in increasing the dollar amount in the parking garages. I know there's been some talk about revamping the garages. I'd like to have that option on the table. Sent the article, I've had three calls on it, just from businesses downtown. And again, walking this evening, I stopped and talked to a few individuals that live in the Plaza Hotel, you know, same thing, is trying to cycle out the cars that are down there. Right now, people are just, you know, paying and whatnot. So if that could be an option.
Certainly.
Thank you. Nothing else.
I'd like to apologize for not recognizing him, and thank Pastor Brooks, and welcome back, Councilman Doris, to the city council once again. On a continued lighter note, my alma mater is Providence. Want to congratulate them on a thrilling victory in their opening of the season.
What'd they play?
Do you really?
I don't know.
I have no comments.
I have one, a couple of comments. We talk about being the change we want to see, and I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the organizers of this past weekend, Joliet 815 Put Down the Gun event. It was a two-day event. It was very well done. The young men who were the organizers are making a change. I believe Chief Benton can attest to some of the good work that they did. And it was good fun for the youth. Again, great work to that organization and those group of guys that put that on. And my other comment is, I just want to thank the Joliet Slammers for allowing me to do one thing on my bucket list, and that was to throw out the ball at Sunday's game. And so, it was great fun. I did get it over the plate, Pastor Brooks. I did do that. I don't know if you want to watch the video, but anyway. And it was a great game, too. It was a great come-from-behind win. And so, it was good fun for everybody else.
That's it. Your Honor? Just one thing along with what Laurie brought, football. I forgot to mention, too, I attended the Joliet Central inaugural home night football game Friday night. It was a great event. Place was packed, great crowd, great family atmosphere. The game did, had to be postponed in the third quarter because of lightning, but, which at the time I left, was getting late for me. But I think they did finish the game, and the outcome wasn't all that well for Central, but it was a great atmosphere. And my hat's off to all those who organized it, and whatever, the board and everybody else. Wait, wait a minute. You said it was getting late for you. You just said they had to shoo you out of the beer garden earlier. Come on. That was a board attempt. Okay. It had to come out late for me. All right.
Just a couple of things. I attended the, last Saturday, the Joliet Catholic Hall of Fame inductees. What a great group. That was the other team.
Was that the team?
Oh, I forgot. Coach Gillespie and classmate of mine, Jim Stefanich, who else? Tom Thayer, Ally Quigley. Who was the fifth one?
Gully.
Gully. Bill Gully, can you forget him? But it was a great event. Also, I want to congratulate the Lockdown. Their hamburger was rated number one by Zagats, the best hamburger in Chicago. They're coming here, and I look for them to start remodeling downtown later this year. And as Councilman McFarland mentioned, September 11th is the Fan Fest Rally downtown. Come on downtown. We've got three bands, a lot of food vendors, and there'll probably be a few beers. So come on down and enjoy yourself. That's all I have.
Mayor, I have a request for a brief closed session.
Okay.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to go into closed session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, land acquisition or conveyance pending or threatening litigation, after which the meeting will be adjourned. Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.[1789.34]